Waiting for Laura. Maybe we can get started. Super well, um, thank you, everybody. Today is March tenth, twenty twenty four, and I will call the regular meeting of the Grand County Planning Commission to order at four thirty. Everyone so far is in attendance except Laura. Laura Long, who may join us later. First order of business is citizens to be heard. I see none in the room. Mr. Springer, you're online. Do you have a public comment or are you here for an agenda item we have later on in the meeting?
I'm here for an agenda item just to be available for the Rourke subdivision.
Excellent. Thank you for being here, Mr. Springer, and when we get to that, hopefully in short order, we will allow you to weigh in. So on to ex parte communications and disclosures. I have none. Does anybody have ex parte communications displays?
I don't have ex parte, but I do have disclaimer. You have his only minister that I'm related to.
Got you. Yes, and.
I'll keep my mouth shut.
That is acknowledged, but I'm sure that that's not going to be a very good problem. Super seeing no other ex parte communications, we can move on to approval of meeting minutes. Last meetings minutes from February twenty fourth are found on beginning on page three of our packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as written or a motion to amend?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with correction on attendance again in the same correction as last.
And what was the correction last time?
Megan was you were here last week, last meeting, right? So her name's missed again.
Gotcha. Let's add.
We need to add you to the template.
I'd like to second that motion as amended.
As amended. Super and Megan, your last name is Shaver with a C H, right? Thank you very much. So all in favor, Jerry's motion will be second to approve the meeting as amended. All in favor passes unanimously. Laura Long, absent. Thank you very much. Caught up with where we're at. Onto presentations and the county commission update. Trish. Feel free to join us at the table. You're not feeling very bitey today?
Yes, sorry, I don't feel super good. Okay, so our March fourth commission meeting, a few things that are relevant to you. We dissolved the Thompson Springs Fire District. So it's been, oh, it's been around. Wow, long time. Yeah, long time. But you know, due to Moab Valley Fire annexation, it no longer exists. I mean, the 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 station will stay out there as part of Moab Valley Fire, but Tom Springs Fire District is gone. And we had the Red Rock CUP. And that, as you guys know, and maybe Chrissy, you can help me out with this. It had to be a CUP because it's over that watershed protection.
Yeah, very.
And so that passed five to two. Mary and myself were were voted against that. I was just making a point. I think Mary, we were just making a point for Chrissy. I said, we're just, we're not picking on you. But you know, it's it is. It it it's concerning in the sense that, you know, obviously the floods that we've had are coming off specifically Johnson's up on top more recently. And they were gonna, they're gonna be sitting at the bottom of that. They're obviously sitting over our spring systems. And so, you know, kind of the the point that I brought up is, so we have all of these lists of, okay, you can't wash your car in your backyard, can't use pesticides and herbicides, but who's gonna lease that? So just, you know, just that that was my sense, not that it mattered, but CUP. And we designated our new zoning administrator Chrissy Hoffline that passed unanimously. We're very excited about that. Where she's quite confident. So we're quite excited about that. We wrote a letter regarding, and I think this is relevant to planning in the sense that we're seeing an elevated level of brine mining. And so Senator Hinkins was the Senate floor chair for House Bill four seventy eight. We wrote a letter, I wrote a letter, we've had a lot of feedback from the Green River community that is within Grand County concerned about some of that mining and specifically the well that's sitting right outside of town, right next to the Green River, et cetera, and so on. So I mean, I I do think this bill was the beginning of guardrails for that mining and or that type of mining. So we wanted to support him in such. But also kind of just outline things that we think are concerning, you know, concerns of contaminating aquifer system, contaminating contaminating surface water systems, concerns about neighboring properties, because that well is literally has neighbors like pretty close, you know. So when they were drilling, they had lights flaring for, I think it went on for a couple of months. I can't remember that drill rig was up. So so just kind of outlining those things for Senator Hinkins. It did pass. It said with amendments, I didn't look at the amendment specifically, but that did pass. So so some guardrails wouldn't put in place.
Just for the record, in keeping with how consistent I want to be with my professional job and saying that I recuse myself from all business related to properties adjacent to the Green and Colorado River. I would extend that on to the activities in Green River, which are adjacent to the sovereign lands, which I manage in my day job. And that activity, if were to come as an action item in front of the planning commission, any activity relating to that type of land use, I would also be recusing myself from that in the same way and consistent with the other ways that I do that.
You guys probably have heard about this, but there was a blowout on that drill rig, which is uncommon. And Bill pointed that out, you know, that's not uncommon. That blowouts, there's obviously you're passing through gaseous layers. So it it blew out some water, some brine type of water. That's no big deal, but it did exceed their property float into the adjacent property, which was in a old, you're reading tailings site. Luckily, it was contained there and did not get into the wash and then be into the green river. So, you know, just those concerns, like how close do you want to be to your surface water systems? You know, if you are consistently having these blowouts, just so you guys know, that well is eleven thousand feet deep. I think it's kind of interesting to understand how deep those wells are. And then maybe Tony can help me with this piece, like they are in theory, they they have a lot of water, a lot of water rights. I remember there fifty acre feet. I can't remember a lot, but it's considered nonconsumptive in the sense that they use it within the processing and then re-inject it. What's was somewhat concerning to the state at one point, but then they eventually, those water rights were stayed, but then they eventually approved them was they're pulling those that water out at a certain place, but not injecting it back to the same spot. I guess it's the best way to put it.
That is my understanding of how the process works.
Right, right. So it's like, well, is that consumptive or is that not consumptive? So so kind of an interesting, just so you guys kind of understand that process. And then the last thing which we're returning once again to this is discussion about ordinance six thirty one and six twenty two camping outside of permitted use. And we've discussed it and discussed it and discussed it. And I guess we're going to discuss it again and workshop it. You know, I think there's some really relevant points brought forth from the county attorney, brought forth by, you know, people that are trying to do ADOs, but you've got a place down the road that, you know, they're they're not abiding by any, they're not putting in any infrastructure whatsoever. And they've got eight cap trailers and God knows what they're, you know, renting them for. So I I do think it's it's something that a county needs to look at. But we'll talk about it again. And so your input, you know, is is that workshop, I think, will be in early April. So I'll let you know when that is and if you're interested in in giving input.
You know, Trish, if you're curious about that discussion, we also at DNR had to go through a long exercise. Well, it wasn't actually very long. It had potentially become very long about actually defining what camping is.
Oh, wow.
And after some roundabout with law enforcement, myself, we got the statute up in Salt Lake City this year that simply defines camping as overnight occupancy of public lands. Of course, what I'm talking about is specific to state lands and wouldn't apply inside unincorporated lands of Grand County. It's not the same exact thing. But we decided that simpler was smoother in that regard, overnight occupancy or the intent to occupy overnight.
Right, right.
If that helps, what's consistent with the statute.
I mean, it's definitely an issue, you know, like I stated between basically Tom Toms and the four way stop. I don't know, twenty forty, illegal cat. I know, I know.
Couple of questions with that on that Red Rock subdivision. When you so when you guys make the CUP up.
I don't do it, but yeah.
What I'm not confused about, so like CUPs, you're supposed to like mitigate the potential problems. So is there a list like so when you're saying we need containment traps in these sediment fields, is that in the land use code or is that in some other?
Or did it come via their engineering reports?
EWS.
Okay.
And then so the engineer, I think within our land use code, the state code, there is allowances for engineers to make those sorts of determinations. And that's where this came from. We were lucky with this one because the applicant stipulated.
Yeah, they seemed it.
So but there is allowances like and it, I think the state code says something along the lines of detrimental effects that can't be mitigated. And so, you know, health and safety is also something that we have whole police power of. So within that, I mean, contaminating water, we would be able to police it. We would also would also be a detrimental effect. So those are very easy to sort of, you know, articulate in a forefront. So like, if you're looking at it from that stance, it's it's a matter of what could we defend legally? And so if an engineer comes in and says, we can mitigate this and here's how and our county engineer is willing to accept that, then, you know, that's where the CUP sort of lives. And if our county engineer wouldn't, then and also within that, I mean, it's a civil action. So if we had had two engineers and one said we can and one said we couldn't, we sort of get to decide. So those are just something.
Yeah, I I thought it was interesting. Bill was like, well, there's a lot of like, he was like, well, there's a lot of like almost all the moabs on that aquifer, but I was looking at the map and I'm like, it's actually not. And I was like, well, how much development? Because you were like, there was just some discussion. I was not clear on that. And I was like, well, is there things in the land use code to protect the aquifer versus just like this legal?
Well, so the city, the city's water source protection, just this one. I think PLESTA covers part of it, the golf course covers part of it, this about this new development, potential development. And then I believe there's a few other places kind of sweeping down that it's in. The EPA protection zone is much bigger. It includes parts of Pals Valley and the.
Jump in for a second and point out just to keep things moving. We have a conversation with Obie and a bullet point about water protection that are neckfading. So we can, we can tap that when we tap it. Thank you very much, Trish. Public hearings, we're gonna jump in. I don't have any public hearings on the agenda, but we do have some general business and action items. So first up, sorry, let me get my paperwork straight here. We have the consideration of the Rourke subdivision in Thompson Springs. Chrissy, remind me real quick, is this one of those new single unit subdivisions where it goes straight to the land use authority? And this is just a review.
This is just a discussion. I just for some background really quickly. So this did come in and go prior land use code, but prior planning director wanted it to be processed under the sub divisions. So that's what we're doing. So this is just a discussion for you guys to bring up anything that you have concerns about, and they will could be considered when. It's summarize this staff report was written for the county commission because it was originally going to go to county county commission and then she decided right to go through the new process. So that's why it says that, but it's just for information for you guys and then whatever discussion you guys may have.
Um, this is a discussion item. Looking through it, I'll just get us started off in a little more well lubricated. When you look at the tax parcel map, flat map here, I compared that before you guys came in to the civil plans invited by River City Engineering. And also you can see I shaded in that little area, that is the parcel in question on the map that zoomed out. If you would like help identifying that is where that is located. But yeah, we've got the the civils and the plat here. You guys have any? This is just a review, just a discussion. I don't have anything that comes to the top of my mind that involves planning and zoning business with this. So I would entertain a motion to send a favorable recommendation for the approval of the Rourke subdivision. That way we can begin.
This is just a discussion. Bring to attend, bring attention to anything that we may.
You're right. I was on autopilot. I don't know, guys, what do we got?
The only vague thing I had was they're doing these divisions of kind of range and grazing between nine and twelve acres each. I was kind of curious about that division because somebody would it would seem to me might want to come back with the nine acre one and subdivide it into two five acre ones, and then you could put two houses. So I'm just curious why, I mean, I'm sure they've thought about that, but it's just something I they they ought to take that quite seriously.
They did only get three water taps for that.
Three water taps for it. So and yeah, okay, and they might not.
Three pieces.
That's reasonable ration. Yeah.
I'm also noticing, Obie, that difference between nine eleven and twelve looks like a function of geometry when all of the plots longitudinally are the exact same width. Looks like they just kind of split it into three and that's.
Go back to my.
Yeah, they're all four hundred and forty one point three. Mr. Springer, you said you were here from Rourke subdivision. I wanted to give you the opportunity to say anything you might need to. Again, this isn't a public hearing or any decision that needs to be made here. We're just looking at the paperwork. So we appreciate you being here. And if you wanted to chance to speak on your topic, I wanted to open the floor to you.
Um, no, I I appreciate you guys taking the time. That is, you know, the the discussion you just had reflects, you know, what what my client was, you know, looking at when doing this. So no surprises there. We also don't have any concerns about going through this process under the the new code. So, yeah, we're just, unfortunately, he wasn't able to attend. He asked me to instead. So thank you. That's all I've got.
Well, thank you very much for your time and attention and being with us. Let the representative say a few words. Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Moving on, Aaron's got some updates for us from the Moab Area Housing Task Force. You've been attending that very religiously, and I appreciate your time actually making the time to do that. I will be admitted to attending the next meeting on this Wednesday.
That's the subcommittee for the county.
Okay. So subcommittee is past force.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, you know, obvious a lot of overlap. Caitlin Meyer sends the Moab area task, housing task force. And they're great. They're, they just got a bunch of data. They're they're gonna come online with that probably within a week. I guess then Laura Harris and Caitlin Myers were like, we would love to do a presentation here. I was like, probably like once a year at least. I know they've presented to us in the past. Their data is kind of interesting on like our housing situation. It's kind of, it's, they just, they have a housing plan twenty twenty three, but they're they're always updating things. They have a, they're having a dashboard, like a housing dashboard. What a couple of things I think is interesting, Mikhail is there too. You know, one of the things they had this section, it was interesting on people living out of their cars. And, you know, their satisfaction and stuff is happiness with that situation, which I thought was interesting in case we want to re-review the ADO, which is something that the other county subcommittee, this ties into that HDH or HDHO thing. It seems like Trish Trish sent out a thing that put all our priorities in that HDHO and ADO was identified as, you know, top ten priorities. And so like looking at data like that's like, okay, like this is obviously a problem. There's how many people are living here and how many types? I just, you know, it's starting to me, it makes, there's, you know, the subcommittee in the in the county subcommittee in the in the border area task force, there's a lot of overlap. And so I would just like to see us think about like, okay, so like on the HDHO, I was talking to Chrissy and Steve Stephen stocks about it. It is so beyond like, I wasn't here when all that was, I mean, I was in Moab. I remember reading in the paper and like, I don't get it. I think I would like to for us, if we have any, if we were like, hey, we should revisit this. I think we could have maybe a workshop. And then like the legal review, it's beyond me to comprehend it. And seeing that there's a kind of appetite for this kind of housing. You know, Stephen, they they were saying like, hey, we could like give this an honest legal review and work out all the the failures and the successes in that. And so, you know, how does that, I don't know how we start that process. I mean, like, everybody's saying, not everybody, but you know, we're identifying this is a is a good thing to do. It's sunsetted. So I don't know, like, what's the next step? Right? Do we do we, like I asked Stephen, I was like, should we hire a consultant to read through this and and whatnot? And I did not follow the state legislature on their HDHO version. I did not follow that. I was following other stuff, but I don't even know if that passed.
I talked for a second. So one thing that I would encourage you guys to think about is the land use code as a holistic document. So coming in and like entering into these overlays and these small little sections when on land use code really needs to be addressed as a whole. And then figuring out after that is done, how these sorts of more progressive policies can fit into that. Really quickly also, while I'm here, everything that I'm saying, I'm wearing the hat of a staff. I'm not giving you legal advice at all. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that everything that I'm saying is as staff and not legal advice. That comes from Stephen. And if I happen to step into, that will, I will make a disclaimer. So just for the record right now. And that is going forward until as much as I'm here.
Item for eighty thousand dollars to do a like a can hire a consultant to address rewriting the land use code. With the with like, see, I see them being like, okay, you've got, you know, medium residential density. We have all these new things. They're gonna write a code to that. And then they're gonna hit the HDH out. And does that eighty thousand bucks include that insult consultation with that?
Well, and what else have to remember about HDHOs is that it was, it was contingent upon these development agreements. You know, you got upsized based on these land, these zone changes. And so, I mean, yes, that's exactly what a consultant would do. And it would just be built into your landings code where these areas would be eligible for.
And I'll I'll jump in quick on the side of like the public administration side of the conversation. You're asking, okay, how do we do it? That we've got eighty thousand dollars to do the land use code update. I mean, inside that land use code, you've got the parks and you've got the roads and you've got all kinds of housing density setbacks, all these little sections. And the administering of that eighty thousand dollars, deciding how it gets spent, how it gets contracted is a determination that's left entirely to the administrative side of county government. So that it be the planning and zoning staff, the planning and zoning director currently vacant, the land use code, the county land use administrator, right? And ultimately, Quinn Hall, the county administrator, that sort of like figuring out how to use the money is over there on the staff side of things. That conversation happens between nine and five Monday through Friday over at the planning department offices, working with the executive branch leadership of the county. We, as an advisory board, can certainly say, hey, we want to prioritize this. Hey, we've done our research and think that these are good ideas. We might want to include that. But generally, as a legislative advisory body, we don't really want to wade into, I shouldn't say don't want to. I don't know that the body of the planning commission really has the legal standing to administer an RFP inside state procurement. Right? Because that's, you're starting to talk about expending public funds and we're not exactly empowered to do that. So what goes the language that goes into the RFP? We can inform, you can state your intention, what you think is a good idea for the record, but that's ultimately not something that is within our control.
So the question I have with that is, let's say I'm a consulting firm. Okay, we got eighty grand. And like, do we kind of be like our own legal department, we'd be like, hey, can you can you revise something? Give us the revision, then we hand it off. Because they're gonna be like, dude, we haven't talked to this. It's not enough. That's the question I'm wondering. If we have it like as a packet, we'd be like, hey, give us a, give us, give us an update.
I will state for the record that I share your concern that eighty thousand dollars is a paltry amount of money for a land use code update that's as large as this. I don't know how much money we get allocated toward which priority inside the land use code with eighty thousand dollars until the staff receives back the proposals. The way the procurement process works is you write up your dream wish list. I want all all this for eighty thousand dollars. You put it out there, public. Consultant firm A says, well, you know, for eighty thousand dollars, I'll give you this. And consultant firm B says, well, I'll give you this. And then on the staff side of things, they rank and triage which proposal they think best fits their use of their eighty thousand dollars. And so we say, as a planning commission, like, it's, you know, clearly stated that you want to see like HDHO. And I think that case becomes stronger if we can get Caitlin and Laura over here and the subcommittee folks over here informing the staff, hey, we want to see HDHO. And maybe when staff goes back and they have to triage all of these different priorities, because we're not going to get it all with eighty thousand dollars, I don't think. We can advise them how that works, but ultimately, that's the staff all the way up to the county administrator. And ultimately in Grand County, because the commission, the county commission is the executive and legislative person. It's going to be up to them on what gets included in an RFP.
And it's funny, I'm thinking of it a lot like future land use map process that we went through. As that that is, I think our input was very important and the input of staff working with us and actually even the individual stuff when they met with individual planning commission members. So I I do like the idea of bringing up housing, making it one of the focuses, suggesting it's one of the focuses. It's why I want to present something on protection for the two waterships, because the people in here understand what I think you, I don't get to do it, but I can convince you this is actually an important issue. It'll probably rise a little bit further up. And then they will take some consideration of it in their write up. And so I I think it's a great idea to get some people in here on housing. If you think the HDHO could survive as a write up, I think that's great. It was a terrifically popular program in terms of on paper, right? Because people signed up and there was a limit to how many housing units you could have under that. And we reached it quite quickly and everybody's seen.
And everybody seemed enthusiastic and then there was some obstacles in it, uh, that. You know, made people back off after they already said, well, this is what we want to do. So I think all that's important. Mary, did you?
Again, I just want to make a statement about the actual land use codes. It's being written beyond the R F P. Yes, we have enough. I, our P V stay out. That's legislative, I've said. Once it's written and once they start writing it, we're gonna see that group quite often. And we as a planning commission get to send and review it to the county council.
I still call him a council.
Um, the county, the she else. Commission, um. We said our recommendation to them. And in the past, and I've been through three of them, it's not a, a fast process. We'll review that thing probably a half a year before it goes anywhere to. So you've got plenty of time.
I didn't know if we wanted to like pick at certain things.
Leave that up to the, to the writers. I mean, they're, they know what they're doing. They, uh, honestly, when they find the right route, you'll be so surprised that they, they do know what they're doing. As. It's our job to make sure that we let them know as they come in and talk to us. That what we want to see in it. Because they're, they're, they're working for that county, even though the R F P says this is what you want to get. They still work for the county. So I would, I wouldn't put it that way.
And also like to follow up on like the housing conversation. I'm also, I've got a meeting with Caitlin Myers tomorrow evening. She'll kind of get me caught up on what the task force has been doing. I'm planning on inviting her. To come in and give us an update. I just kind of wanted to find out what her timeline is like. Sit down with her and be like, hey, are you kind of. Gonna come in on March twenty fourth? Are you gonna, can you do it in April? But I'm planning on sending an invite to her. And once we figure out her team's schedule and what fits on our regular planning schedule. I think it's a very good idea as we get ready to be presented these updated codes. That we have very strong idea and that we're all on the same page about what we want, that section that. Involves, um, density and affordable. Air quotes for the microphone, housing to look like, so that we can. Not get bogged down. I think it's very worthwhile to continue to have that conversation. I think that conversation is happening in the best place that it can right now. With the information of Hsu and Mackel and the other like housing experts on that subcommittee and on that task force. And when they come over to tell me what they think about housing, I'm gonna be very personally deferential to their recommendations. Because I, I don't know how some, I drive boats. So yeah, that's how I like the process. I kind of see it unfolding. It's like keeping them in the loop, maybe having them instead of once a year, like it used to be, maybe, you know, six times a year. If that's what we think is necessary to really get the information out that we need to.
Yeah. And again, I would recommend people look at this, their, their strategic plan. And there's a lot of good numbers about who's having housing, who needs housing and where the demographics are.
Yeah, it's very helpful. Thanks, Aaron. I appreciate it. Um, does anybody else have thoughts on the housing task force? I'm gonna extend an invitation to Caitlin tomorrow and we'll be following up from there. Um.
Only thought I have is kind of circling back a couple of meetings ago, when Jerry was bringing, when Amy was here. Um, I think the other thing that would help support us in these conversations is to have that data. That we were hoping to achieve or to have Amy help us with in. Who was approved on applications for H D H O's, who saw that project through, who didn't see that project through. Just to have a better idea of the applicants them, themselves. I mean, that's. Black and white evidence for us to see this is what we're, this is what failed, but this is why it failed. And I think to have that piece with all of the other ones will help. Help us go into the right direction as a whole.
I completely agree. And before this meeting started, Mikelle let me know that she did yoink some of that data. She had to dig around and do some research. I personally, the way I digest data is like on Friday morning at eight A M. With my cup of tea. So maybe we could just have you email that out to us for our review. Rather than just like holding up the thing and running down a bunch of statistics that I am not gonna keep in my head. But, um, if, if, you know, that data would absolutely be useful. Um, and again, I am neither. I am also not a lawyer and it's not legal advice, but I would also point out, because you're asking like, who are the applicants that succeeded and not? I know in my work life, I'm working through a new state law that restricts. Um, what they call personally protected information, names and addresses and government records. And so I would definitely, before we share that information. Send it through Stephen's office to make sure that, that certain information is redacted. Um, that's a brand new law and it's really wreaking havoc. We've got. You know, a couple million cubic feet of documents and archives that we need to go and. So that is like definitely something curious. And while we look at that data, let's look at it through a slant of the. The what and the why or why not, and not necessarily the, you know, the, 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 the I P, P I I. As they call it. Um, thank you though. You're right. That I was, and thank you, Mikelle, for finding the time to dig that up. I know researching those kinds of numbers is not.
I want to comment on that too. Mikell, I think Tony's exactly right. If you could send that out in some format. That we could review ahead of time, because a lot of times somebody will see something in the day to have a question and on day three or four iterations, do you really what you want? Some, yeah, thanks for doing what you're doing. That's awesome.
And the way that process would work, I'm thinking, you know, we have a chance, we can sit on that, read it, digest it, chew on it a little bit. And when we schedule a meeting with the task force and or subcommittee, um. If we have questions about that data, uh. Why, when I get asked a bunch of like ran, not, I don't want to say random questions, but, um. When I have questions coming from the public and they want to know what's going on, I always really appreciate, especially for public meetings and things like that. Like let us as a body compile our questions in advance, so we can send them up to the task force and staff. So that they can actually have a chance to like research and get us a good answer, rather than just kind of like blowing them up on the spot. And you're like, well, I don't really have that. Like the pre-planning and legwork ahead of this is pretty important. As we make informed decisions. So that's the, the informed part. Um, let's look at the data, you know, make your notes and send them in. We'll send. Those folks a, a list of things that we may can actually like, you know, not get blindsided, but be prepared for that meeting that we. We'll call it the housing meeting. It's not scheduled yet, but we'll have a whole feature. Whole feature. Cool. Um, other thoughts on H D H O? Super. Where am I? Oh, next up will be, um, training requirements from Jerry. Jerry, I appreciate you bringing this one up too, because. I realize that I have not done my, in a little while and I should probably get around to doing that.
Well, and the reason I brought this up is Amy actually sent out an email to all of us. I think it was in late January. Does that sound right?
Yes.
It's already almost two months ago, but in the email, she linked to some state statute. And if you click on the link, you get what's in pages eleven and twelve. That look, all of me have looked at that, but. On page twelve, it talks about training requirements for this commission. And the first thing that hit me was. I'm not sure for accounting of the first, second or third class. Does anybody know?
We are fifth class.
Okay. So then none of the supplies.
And, and we also don't have five thousand or more in the unincorporated areas.
Near as I could tell, it's about thirty five hundred.
Yeah. I, 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 you know, I, I got somewhere around forty three hundred, the county, Castle Valley and Moab maybe being fifty three and. Castle Valley being three hundred, but anyway, yeah.
You and I came up with close to.
Close enough, yeah.
Yeah, both of them on it. But then while I was going through this, I thought, you know what? If you look at this list of the annual training, training that's available and then. After listening to, is it Rob Terry?
Rob Terry from the ombudsman's office.
Yeah, that's right. I actually clicked on the link of, of those two things that he mentioned, or I looked them up on the web. It's, um, Civic Link and the Luau, Luau. Yeah, it looks like both of those are free and a lot of these topics are. And so the reason I wanted to bring this up is, um, from a personal standpoint, I'd like to make the most use of my time here on this commission as possible. Do as good a job as I can. And I can tell you just by looking at those, uh, we, that list of training requirements. I'm familiar with some things, but most of that, I don't have proficiency in. So I guess from my, my standpoint, I think it would be good if we challenged ourselves to actually meet this state requirement. Even though we're not required to. And I wanted to throw that out to this group to just open it up for conversation. Didn't want to make a motion.
Well, it is, I mean, it is interesting how much up in this office sounds like they would be. Willing to for even to small groups come down and do it. It wouldn't take necessarily our own staff time. And then. She said lots of stuff is online, but one way to get us to do it is to have us at the same meeting doing it.
I, I thought we could get the city to do, make it worth as well.
Uh huh.
And there might be, there might be some topics that would work well as a group, but the, the other thing about doing some of the online is. I think between the seven members of the commission, we could cover a whole lot more than if we all went through the same thing. And there's a lot of topics on that list.
You know, I, building on Aaron's idea, I had a thought and, um. I may shop this one out to someone who is feeling particularly motivated. But the rules that the ombudsman's office is gonna come down and explain to us are going to be applicable to any political subdivision body in our area. Um, I also am acutely aware of how difficult it is to get a bureaucrat from Salt Lake City down here. Um, they are very willing and able and they, they will do it as often as they can, but. It's, uh, I'm really well appreciated and reciprocated to, um, kill as many birds with as few stones as possible. Um, so we might consider inviting, uh, San Juan or Emery County Planning Commission. To that as well and make it as big as possible. We have the Grand Center available that seats two hundred and thirty people. Um, we used to have the OP training, opening public meetings act, uh, for the entire region for it's us. That's. You, um, grand San Juan, everyone, Marvin. And, uh, we used to do the whole region for opman, everybody showed up. And that was really nice. And, um, it might be worth thinking. Or approaching our partners in San Juan and Moab City and, and Green River City, if they would all like to, to join in.
And really quickly, uh, the county attorney's office is obligated to do a overturning every year and that is being planned currently. Stephen, um, and it should be in Star Hall, I believe we decided in April. Uh, for all the boards that has happened. And there's also, it's also available, but just to throw that out there, that is something that is being.
They, even our county commissioners might know, uh, know all the rules. I, they should be invited probably too, because they, you know, we have that kind of final authority.
Absolutely, especially in the new subdivisions rule that we have.
Yeah. So maybe it's kind of a mix of a big group meeting, then a little bit of any other. The nice thing about online is you can do it on your own and then we don't need this, you know, schedule birds together. Anyway.
Yeah, um, follow up thoughts on that? Do, um. Do I have anybody who wants to kind of, we're kind of like shopping out a lot of duties and tasks right now. Aaron's been kind of our housing guy. Obie's got some agenda items on water. Do I have anybody who's willing to be the party planning committee?
I don't know about. I would be happy to reach out to Green River, Mob City, San Juan. Anyone else you guys think of? I think that that, I, I totally agree, strength in numbers. And it is. A challenge to get that kind of support down here from upstate emphasis, so.
Yeah. So I think, you know, initially the conversation might just be like, would you be interested? You know, we would be able to host you if we're definitely pulling in Emery and San Juan. We're kind of a midpoint anyway. It's good for travel. Um, and we can talk about the nitty gritty of that after the fact, but let's reach out and, and fly the idea. See if, see if we get any bites. Very good. Other thoughts on training requirements? I personally was hit in the face with exactions last time the ombudsman was there. I'd never even heard that word before in my life. And so I'm gonna need to read a lot about what exaction is. And thank you, thank you for finding us this book. Who was that? Mikell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I love a new book and I was just reading through it already. It is.
There's some fun stories in.
I bet. And it's also, um, quite well written. They weren't joking. It is plain English. It's easy to digest. I was like, this is not so bad. Um, yeah, normally I see a book that says rules on it in like seventy two point five. I get a little excited, but. We'll be, we'll be.
Yeah, questions on a particular item. And that's how I, how I went most of the times. I have something to come in, ask me questions. I don't want to look at that. And then I.
I'd do that. I'd like to carry on with this conversation.
Please.
And just to kind of wrap up. I think the general question that Megan's gonna ask is good, I guess. I, I'd like to get some thoughts. If we were to do that, I would think we'd want to concentrate on the most important stuff first at the bigger meeting and. That one hour training, uh, one hour of annual training on general powers and duties looks like it probably is the key thing. Since it's on the top of the list, that might be a good item to have.
Yeah, Ludna, um, a deep dive into that act, I think is, uh, maybe in order, I, a lot of what the ombudsman said. At his last, uh, Rob Terry presented to us the last meeting was very Ludna focused. Um, but. Um, we could always have benefit from a review or a deep dive. And if we have Green River, Moab. Montcellus, San Juan come in too. It might be to everybody's benefit to just hit Ludma again. That's really where the rubber meets the road for us.
My, my thought on the rest of these, like conditioner use permits, exactions, impact fees, those things tend to tend to get specialized and used less often. And my thought there was if we had a, you know, maybe build a matrix of the members' names. Or the commissioners' names, if we had people that volunteered to look at some of those and others looked at other things, so we could probably cover most of the stuff on this list. By this group within a year. So any thoughts on that kind of a coordinated approach?
You, uh, end up having, uh, one expert in each of these fields or with the person kind of come back and do a kind of summary of the important points. What, what are your thoughts?
That'd be a real good thing.
That'd force them to have to learn.
And we could spread this out over a year. It's not like we take a lot of time in meetings to do it.
She knows all that stuff. Every time I have a question, I call her. I mean, like she said, it's not the attorney that she's speaking from. This is that she learns it. The book up and shoves it in her hair. It is, but you, you gotta hear our conversations in the car.
Maybe I'd just turn on music.
I would, I would suggest maybe we each look, um. As a voluntary board and as someone who is, um, you know, a professional bureaucrat, barely keeping their head above water. I'm very hesitant to start doling out homework assignments to volunteers. Um, I would be. Curious if, uh, people were able to voluntarily say like, hey, you know, I'm actually curious about conditional use permits.
I'll volunteer to build a matrix with these things on it. If everybody can just take a look at this and say a month from now. We'll come back and I'll see if there's any areas you're interested. We'll just see how the matrix fills in. What does that say?
And a person doesn't have to volunteer.
If you don't have time to do it, don't bother to. Retired people.
I knew, yeah, we should take two, shouldn't we?
Anyway, what do you think? Put it on the calendar for a month from now and see.
I mean, yeah, it's, uh. Again, deadlines sound like homework assignments, but, um, if, if that's the kind of thing we want to do. I'm not gonna stop you guys from, from, from choosing to learn more. I think that's a fantastic way to go about it. There's some things. I'm gonna dive in here on my own, um.
Yeah, you said you're gonna do it in section anyway. Already gonna do.
Yeah, um. Yeah, um. Just, I mean, it would be good for all of us to know all of this stuff, but it's not a perfect world, is it? Um.
Only gonna make us a better.
Yeah.
Throw that this out here, maybe, you know, we have a group email. Thing that like, hey, watch this video this week while you go to sleep. On this Luau thing and then it's like structured. I was, I had turned that, was thinking about that like, oh yeah, we all watched that one video.
Just a reminder that the prohibition on uh, virtual commerce.
Yeah.
No, 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 I I'm backing up what you're saying. That applies only um. To like matters that are our business and contemplating our rules and actions. You can copy all of us if you find a video that you think is worth watching. Feel free to copy all seven of us and send it along. Just don't say that you think the ideas in this video should apply to so-and-so subdivision. Don't, don't do that. But yeah, there's, just feel free to share in information like that.
To that point, I guess, could we have the meetings reflect that I volunteered to build a matrix? And then. The the other thing I would ask in the minutes is that we could put the link to both of those sites that Rob talked about, so. Everybody can go there and take a look.
Sure.
Are you gonna use Word or Excel? Will you use Excel?
Well, yeah, is that okay? But I'll do the typing.
I'm not good with Google. I'm not a Google person.
Neither am I. I'm an Excel person.
No, Jerry, that sounds fine to me. Yeah, um, um, I will. Commit as much as my sanity permits. Um.
And I guess. Last item then. Is, Mikel, do you have both of those links from Rob? As if you don't, I can email.
Yeah, I am wanting to.
Okay. Now it's all.
I will have, uh, I'll make another there too.
Those Civic Link and Luau dot Utah dot.
Their courses, their.
It looks like they're all free. Gotta sign up for.
The link is spelled with a Q, right?
Yeah, yeah, link Civic Link.
Look at that, straight out of the dome. Thank you, Jerry. That's, that's. Good reminder. Um, okay, so. For future considerations, I wanted to thank you guys right off the bat um, for. The uh, agenda item submission forms that worked really smoothly. I'm sorry that I had to send out a couple versions before you got the editable Adobe PDF document. Um, that went great. So thank you, Dobie. I'm sorry. I uh, had to put yours on the next thing. I saw that email came in at two PM and I'd already shot off the email to Mikel.
Well, and and it's it's kinda good that it's. Cause I'll, I'll probably have some material I'll send out to you.
And so our next planning meeting, March twenty fourth. Um, we're going to have Obie doing a presentation on groundwater quality protection considerations. In the discussion items, anything else you guys might wanna get on there? Please try to have those in by noon. On the preceding Tuesday, so that's on at noon, eight days from now. Um, would be the. Agenda, where is my calendar? Oh my God, my life. That would be um, at noon on March seventeenth. Would be the the deadline for, if you want something to be considered for the twenty fourth, otherwise. And you can feel free to send something in and say, oh, we don't need to talk about this till April. I just wanted to get this out of the way, like I. The way I have this business organized. In my own little like personal Google Drive, I've got a folder of all the agenda items for every meeting. And we can plan that out in advance. If you'd like, just send it in to me. I wanna talk about this in June and I'll put it in the June tenth folder. We get. Um. With that. Do um. Okay, sorry, I'm gonna go back real quick. For the discussion on Obie's water quality stuff. I would familiarize ourselves, just Google it. Write it down. I'm not very good at remembering email folks. Um, some stuff to talk about, be familiar with. The EPA Source Water Protection Zones. Um, you can Google those, find the website, read what they exist and how they're for. Same thing with the DEQ Aquifer Protection Zones, what they're for and that sort of thing. Just have a little like, this is what um, works really well with the funeral considerations. You know, we are anticipating having a conversation around groundwater quality, so that'll be kind of the. Stuff that I'm thinking on and refreshing myself in a, in ahead of this conversation is, is the, what are the? Source water protections that exist, what sections of the code in the Utah Land Use Code and the Future Land Use Plan. Um, tell us to do with with source waters zones, what is our stated future intention that way? So. Anticipate that and um. Yeah.
That's that. Probably send out. The WSPO, which is the Water Source Protection Overlay Zone, and I think there's a piece that's relevant that's actually outside of that. So I'll make sure those together. And I think it's just. Three, four pages, it's not gigantic, what's in, what's in uh, land use code.
What, what did you say that document was called?
Uh, it's Water Source Protection Overlay. And I think it's in there, it's in the section on overlays. When you look at the land use code.
Yodoki, so um. If there's nothing else. Uh, wow, sorry, guys, I skipped lunch. I shouldn't have done that. Um, seeing no other items on our agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
One move to adjourn.
Seconded by Laura. All in favor? Thank you for being patient with me, guys. Daylight savings is not the kind of thing that.